And land clearing to order seven oh four. Roger, I'm sitting at the back, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about why you guys came up with this and why you think we should look at this as a law?
Well, first of all, I think we need to use the law.
We can, we can summarize it, we sent it out, you know, we had.
Okay, well, although it's like, my name is Roger, I'm the chairman of the planning board in the village of the second Monday of every month, most months, at seven thirty PM at Village Hall. And one of the things we've been doing for about the last two years is considering what kind of, whether the village needs some kind of "pre-law" in quotes, or clearing the law. Because it's been realized that one of the causes of soil instability and runoff in the village, especially in areas of steep slopes, is that when, that sometimes when trees get cleared, the soil becomes unstable and water and sediment runoff into neighbors and the village yard. And we're trying to understand how, how this can be, since it seems to be a practice that needs some management, how one could go about it. The village, a lot of villages is cleared farmland maybe forty or fifty years ago. And one consequence of that is quite a plausible population of trees that are sixty some odd years old, that are probably, are dying, and so on. So we've been thinking about this online for two years, and they have so many, and it's been a process that accelerated, get our ideas through, so we can bring it to the village and get feedback. Because it is sort of the same, and I wouldn't like to do this, thanks for the time. But the, I think the emphasis is on reducing erosion or find better, and so to the extent that guidance is needed, trees, other vegetation is cleared, especially in steeper areas. The village is going to provide that, and in a timeframe, that is about the same timeframe as it would take a precompany to come and work on it. Twenty, yeah, that's the basic idea, and these are our ideas, as we have presented to the trustees, and the trustees decided to go forward with that.
Before we take public comments, does anybody have any questions about the law? The proposed law, I should say.
I have one question, I don't know if it's in this print, but I think it's an important point. In the definition of terms, you define a large tree as having a circumference of twelve and a half inches. Which would suggest to me that it would have a diameter of roughly four or so inches. So, did you mean a diameter of twelve and a half inches?
Well, it's, I think it's easier to measure circumference than a diameter, so it doesn't mean the circumference.
So what you're saying is that, you're not, first, you're asking us to legislate trees of four inches or so around and up. But you're defining a tree this diameter as a large tree, all right?
Well, that's, that's what, we took some of these words from other, other, words, no, other legislation, legislation, in others, in the sometime. So, so right now, that's, if those say what we intended to say, then maybe that's not right. So, so that's why we're here for feedback, but it's not just. Yeah, Roger?
So, I'm Mark Wiggins, I'm also on the planning board, and I wrote, I wrote a lot of this, and just to, just to, for that, most of the other legislation that we looked at was using similar size, maybe, defending the size of the tree that they were just.
So, I'm Diana Padilla, and the reason that there's concern about trees that are, that seem by many people's standards to be small, it's because if you don't protect those trees, then as bigger trees fall down, you never have the next generation of coming up. So if everyone cuts, everything that's, or protects only things that are this big around, then you never have the succession of the rest of the forest coming back. By protecting those trees and then requiring regulation to protect trees that are this big around, but are thirty feet high, twenty feet high, then that protects the forest so that it continually regenerates. That's what, that's why those regulations are there.
I don't have a problem, I'm sure most of the people in the room would probably not have a problem with figuring out how we could control erosion and have some way of making sure that we don't, clear cut reliability can be left with the consequences. My point amazing it was simply to say, well, the way the law is crafted, it's a definition of terms as much as anything else, that, that to me would not represent a live tree. And if you're talking, I mean, a large tree, and if we're talking about emphasis on replanting, making sure that the next generation of trees has the ability to survive, I would feel for it. I think that most people would say, yeah, that's a noble goal of having some kind of a law for protecting the trees. But if we're talking about, I mean, this clearly restricted world, it comes to every little pruning thing. And so, it seems to me that we should have a clear definition of what is a large tree, because we're all pruning. It's like, if I hear one more thing, I'll, large tree is clearing one, so on. So, maybe we should concentrate on those trees, and have some law that has something to do with erosion. Rather than simply saying we have this new tree law, and anytime anybody has a limb that they have to take down, they have to go through all this imagination stuff.
But I think, I think, just, I think the planning board's part of this was just to get us started, to get into the subject.
I'm talking about the large tree.
I'm Mike Shaefer, I'm also on the planning board.
I can't hear.
It's not only the size of, well, a tree of that size has a substantial root system. And that's another thing that's looked at, is how much water it absorbs, so the erosion doesn't happen. And pretty much, as Roger said, twelve, twelve and a half inches is the industry standard throughout Long Island, as to what's considered a tree that's substantial in order to leave it. And the law doesn't say you can't prune, and it doesn't say you can't cut down. It just says that we need to look at it to determine whether or not there is going to be erosion because of the loss of that tree. We want you to prune, we want you to cut down a lot of trees. That's wrong to do, you shouldn't be doing that. This is just a look at it, review it, and then determine whether it's on bluff, whether it's on flat land, where it is, what else is around it, what's the soil like? So we can determine, so we don't have the erosion problem that we've been starting to have for that village.
So maybe what you're saying is that, instead of using the word "large" as a definition, a viable or established tree of any sort, something like that, where we're not. Because we do have to address the issue of these overly mature trees that are past their prime, and those are the ones that are killing us with all these down wires and the other.
And we don't want them.
So I would just like to see some separation, here's how we're going to address this problem, here's how we're going to address that problem. And if we have a problem with erosion, and people not allowing new growth to take hold, I can understand that that's going to apply. If we're talking about restricting, and I'm glad to hear you say that, more people are pruning, restricting what we think are these big trees that are killing us, I think we need to.
Well, I'm not sure, look at, that's what this is supposed to mean. We want, we urge people to have these trees hidden care of on a daily basis. We want a tree with a substantial root system when those larger trees go down, because it'll take years to rebuild that root system, and that's what holds the dirt deep. So, and that's why, should we say that we want it smaller. And a forest tree can be twenty, twenty-five feet tall, it all depends on what tree it is. And we're not telling you you can't cut down any trees, we're saying we need to review it beforehand to determine whether or not there needs something to be done to take its place.
Can I ask a question to the planning board? Are there laws required for the application? It says the application shall contain number five point two point six. It says grading slash photography map, if the plan proves a change in slope greater than fifteen percent, it'd be reasonable slope, or a slope greater than five percent. If, if you're going to change the slope, it just gets very confusing, I don't understand, it's, you can change it up to fifteen percent, but then.
Fifteen percent more than required.
No, they're more.
Or greater than five percent. And that's basically original road, you can't put a road, because it's steep, and the water's running down, it's a lot of.
But if you're grading it, you're changing the slope by fifteen percent, are you implying then you're reducing the slope to only five percent? I mean, Roger, you want to.
I think the intent was that if the slope was a certain value, that if it was changed by more than fifteen percent of that value, then it would trigger this. I guess we really distinguish if it got steep or.
Yeah, but then it says more slope than.
Well, I think the idea was that if a new slope was created that was more than five degrees, that, that also would be, something that would flag this. Now, it may be that it's somewhat redundant and awkward, but that was the intent, a change in, so if there was a certain slope that was stable, it's stable. Change it by more than a certain amount, it could become unstable, and so we're trying to catch that.
I get that idea.
But it is a little, not as clear as it appears.
You could speak to the village engineer and fix that up, that's not a problem.
I have a question. Does someone come and determine, does someone come and look at the property and determine, you know, whether you need this criteria, whether a tree is safe to take down, or is it going to cause erosion? Is it some type of expert, engineer, tree expert?
Good question.
Good question.
So I guess, we weren't so sure, we gave that role to the planning board, we hope that we would figure out better ways to. Yeah, I think the idea was that if you brought in picture or something like that to the planning board, to make it as easy as possible, if you brought in an obviously a tree or something that needed, that needed to be taken down, that the planning board could then immediately approve your request. If you came in with something that was more complicated or not as obvious, then perhaps, then the planning board would request that we have some more due diligence on whether that actually was.
Would that be, would that be right away, or would that have to wait for every plant for it to be done?
I believe the tree law, the tree board was a separate. Well, I think we anticipated a, some kind of application like the online form now that would get some immediate attention by some committee. I'll point out that the village is entering into an agreement, I think it's PDC, is it, or we're setting to study the trees on the village property. PDC, and the planning board has been asked to follow that, to specify, inspect the land, and ask to go a little bit further. But I think we have a system of getting some, some extra expertise if there seems to be something that's more than.
I think there's also a division in that if you, if you have an immediate problem, there's, you can go ahead and take care of it, and just have to justify it at that point.
I have a suggestion, four point one, by definition, we're going to use a four inch diameter tree. Certainly, we want to clean and take away any trees near our houses that are potentially hazardous. How about putting an exemption in there with a setback from the house, around your house? You can't take down a large tree without a permit, if it's within so many feet of your house. Rather than having to get on permit. But every tree you want to take down potentially is endangering your house. The village will be flooded with permits.
Roger, can you come down to stormwater management?
Well, so, so I'd say it's not impenable exception, then, then the act of, if moving some number of trees creates a condition that's runoff, then it's exactly what we want.
We want to use time to say.
So, well, I'd say mitigate in that sense, that we'd be interested to know what, what was going to be done to collect or capture or otherwise manage the water, or something that would run off, some amount of extra water.
Now we have in place, when people are doing clearing, removing trees, and changing that grade, we do go to inspect to see if they do need a stormwater.
Well, I think there's a sort of applied minimum size thing. Part of the intent here was to bring that to a smaller size.
Gotcha.
But if you're right, because.
It might be able to be a lot simplified through erosion, versus bringing a tree law into it.
What? So I don't think the stormwater management goes into effect unless you actually have a building comment.
Right, I think the idea was that the current legislation, the rules that guide this, don't go, don't cover a range of possibilities, and this is meant to bring that in. Now, whether, whether this would end up as something called "pre-law" in the law, or whether it be provisions within other, other parts of the code, I don't know how that would, that would be done. Like, it tends to be stormwater management, still, that has not covered it already.
Also, just to add to that, if you have a tree that's right on next to your house, and you have a big, big storm like Sandy, or a wicked storm, and it falls on your house and destroys your house, is there a big discretion to take up with this tree law?
No. Well, we had, what this says is that, that anything can be done when there's property in lives or involved. And what, what we requested is that, that some, within some time period, I think it's five days or something, that, that, just to make sure that you're covered under this, that you bring in the information that shows the picture of the tree and how it's, okay? We're trying to, to work towards a fixing of that. We tend to stop, stop, stop anything that, and so it's just about catching up.
How do you measure slope in degrees?
Eighteen from zero.
In percent, sorry, I meant in percent. How do you measure the slope in percentages?
I think it's, the rise is a certain percentage of, this is a certain percentage of that.
Of the horizontal distance?
Would anybody like to make a comment?
I just am wondering, either was this proposal started because of people, if certain, living certain areas or certain places? Or was this proposal started because of a need to realize that people should stop cutting down their trees? Are there particular properties that are, some people are on a block, some people are not on a block? Some people live in whole flats, some people live in old whole flats. So, was there a problem that the trees all of a sudden became issues?
Roger?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of this path that goes, that the boat column goes down to the beach. And the column suddenly, on top of it, because it was clearing on a slope, which then failed, and all of a sudden it ran down across the village property. So there's, that's one example. I think there are, I've, others have, tell me if there are other examples, but, but, oh, I've heard of an example from an older time, where there's clearing on a slope, and, and the water and sediment ran next door, and they had to build painting walls and, and structures. I don't have a complete list, but, but it's something that has happened before, and if water isn't really a way to try to prevent this kind of.
Isn't that a building problem?
Except that, that clearing isn't related to construction, and the clearing is of small enough an extent that it is not.
That second example sounds like a building problem.
I, it might have been, I don't know, I think the, well, so, so the, I don't really know, but that would be, just an example that these are, that some of the large clearing of areas, especially in the streets, so it's.
And then.
Roger, it sounds like the problem is primarily attributed to cutting down trees on slopes. So why wouldn't you put that in there on any, any tree four inches or greater in diameter, on four point one point three on a slope of a certain degree? Rather than any tree four inches in diameter, you need a permit to take down. It's so restrictive. The root system.
So you're for it or against it?
Root system may go fifteen feet, on three, it's four inches. That's a bad issue.
That's, that's a level that we look at, okay? We're not telling you you can't take down a tree, and if there's remediation, it may be bushes and stuff.
Not his property, a four inch tree in most of the house you can't take down.
Yeah, it can. I think we should address the bullet, if you know this gets crazy.
You understand, or you just.
No, I just spout a little.
Just a question, the path down from Village Hall down to Walmart, I think you said? If, I don't know who owns the land on either side, but if somebody there cleared it off, and then there was a problem, don't you have recourse to go to the person who created the problem without? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking, you're making a tree law and you're using that as an example. I would think you would have recourse to have the person who created the problem have to fix it.
Well, I think it's better for the village if we address these problems rather than.
I think it's, you're, you're getting into, it's better to apologize than ask permission. And I think you want to have this in place so that it can be looked at. And on a flat ground, if you go back to the beginning of the, the intent of the law, it is to also retain the rural appearance of the community and the wooded character. So that would include trees on a flat area. Yeah, right next to me, the whole character has been destroyed because he cleared every tree, okay? It does not look like the character that was on that house. The other side of me, yes, they, it was not a building issue, they did try to spread out the ground, and they caused runoff to the next house. They were not building, they were just trying to expand their, their usable plot, and it did, and they had to put retaining walls, so it is a problem for people.
Be discovered, Roger, is anything in the proposed law designed to deal with people who can't be bothered to get a permit and just let a dying or dead tree fall over? And then create some precedent that they'd be obligated to replace it somehow?
Well, we had a neighbor's tree fall on our house, and they, they're not going to do it, but, I think the guy, the person who moved it, I made his tree falls on us. So, I guess one can't guarantee that trees can fall, I'm no house or an experienced house. But I think there's, one of the reasons we're worried about managing trees to the point that they die is that the, the law is, it's, the, the stuff that's here is more set to, to say, let's work with the trees, rather than try to kill the trees so we have just to take them down.
I understand that, but, I mean, I've got a dead tree between myself and my neighbor, like, ah, two of them actually, you've seen them. So, if, if, if I just leave those, and they fall over, and I get them removed, am I then, through this law, obligated to have some sort of endless discussion about whether I've eroded the landscape and have to replace them?
Well, I think the, no, it's lack of nature.
It's funny.
No, good.
Does it say it in there anyplace? Don't go out and push.
Went through this when we had a non-tornado. Neighbor's tree, neighbor's tree came down, cut my car in half, and hit the roof. When that tree came onto my property, according to the insurance companies, that becomes your property. Your homeowners kicks in, that's how it works in New York State. So I was told so, I followed it.
What's that?
Yeah, I do the exact, we have the same situation, we had a tree fall on neighbor's house, not the house, the cars, and it turns, homeowners in charge, sit down, and take the cars. I, I know, I saw that, I saw a street fall. He said, it has to be a fixed structure, and that's the house, that's, with your tree.
Village tree.
Village tree, that should have been checked.
Are there any more comments about the proposed tree law?
Yes, I'm, I'm very happy to have this, that this is being proposed. I have, I personally experienced a neighbor, if I'm on a hill, a person deforesting their property, and, you know, then had to build retaining wall, print drain, all kinds of things to mitigate that situation. So, I applaud the planning board for bringing this. And the other thing is, after our latest storm, I've noticed, when I went from twenty-five A, I would look at my thermometer during the summer, I'd measure the temperature, and it was usually three degrees cooler where I live, and after the storm, it was only one degree cooler. So I think, you know, we really need to look at that, affects the benefits of being in a forested community, and doing what we can to preserve our beautiful trees.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I'm down with block one, the tree wall taken down.
I went down the block, there were trees, all sectioned out. And I lived at the bottom, and now I crap and block and that was my part of my house every year. And, you know, I can't fix it because it's done, and so I'm picking in favor of this law or something like that. The only thing that kind of bothered me, it seems, I don't know if you showed a picture, but it seemed a little onerous if you had a dead tree that you gotta... It seemed like you had to do a lot of things. Well, that's my reading of it. So, I have dead trees frequently, and I take them down. So, Eric Moore spoke to me, he said, he takes it down. Just pointed you a picture. That's what I would like to do.
Picture Eric, you're in full price. My property's gotten trashed twice, both storms, okay? I'll write you a blank check because I could really care less, honestly, about certain things when it comes to the trees, all right? I'm all for protecting them, but you know what? We have a lot of dead trees in this region neighborhood. And if we don't get them taken care of, we're going to sustain this kind of damage year after year after year. I'm done with it, flat out.
I think that one issue with...
Why don't you take care of those trees?
It's late. They're already on my house, nine hundred pounds of those.
Doesn't say you can't take them down.
But I think that one issue with the regulation is that it seems like you're focusing on people that are land-clearing and destroying many trees, okay? But yet, the law is affecting everybody else that wants to prune this tree or maybe remove a tree. But pruning and... What are you saying? No, I read the regulation. It seems like it's going to give the village blanket, you know, fallout authority, whether it's trimming or pruning or removal or defacing or anything. And who's going to come and do the evaluation? I mean, is it going to be somebody, you know, from Village Hall? Is it going to be a sort of an arborist or they're working for? I mean, there's just a lot to it. And I think there's a lot of things in the law that need to be... That need to really be spelled out, okay? The grade thing, there's a whole bunch of different things in that regulation, which it strikes me as it's too much. It's just too broad. It's too broad. We need to know if you're going to pull out twenty trees and clear out the... Okay, it's one thing. If you have a dead tree or a sick tree on your property, you got to prune it. It's got some dead branches. To go through all this, just to prune the tree with some dead branches to protect your own environment or to even protect people from getting killed down in the street, you should see the size of the limser that fallen in front of my house on the street. It's a miracle nobody was killed, okay? These are all dangerous trees. I mean, we got to be able to just take care of our own property reasonably.
So, this makes me concerned. Somebody had told me that pruning is going to help the trees of the area. So, pruning is not...
Well, it's in the regulation.